Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, council member Thomas is absent. Approval of the agenda, is there any changes to the agenda, council?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes, March 21st, 2018, regular meeting. Are you in your packet, is there any changes, corrections, or clarification needed? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the March 21st, 2018, regular meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. This now brings us to our public open forum, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? It will be limited to three minutes apiece, this is for things that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that would like to, okay, you want to come up to the microphone, state your name, address?
My name's Dave Martholler, live on 538 Elm Street North. Last year we got assessed anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars for this improvement you guys got going on up there. We had a meeting last year, I only got three minutes, so I just assumed not answering questions.
No.
But anyway, we had a meeting, a few people showed up, not much was said except for you guys will have a think about it and come up with a public forum, and we'll have a discussion some other time. We all assumed up there that we were going to get informed. To my ignorance, I didn't keep up with your minutes, I didn't keep up with the council, didn't hear nothing, nobody up there did either. But we got our tax thing just this year, you know, a couple weeks ago, paid the bill, blah da blah da, anyway, nothing, no assessments on it, cool, didn't get passed, we're all happy. Except I asked around and then somebody said, yeah, it did. I had to go back in the minutes, looked, sure, sure, you guys passed it, which is fine, you know, my ignorance, I didn't keep up with it. But then it also said you're going to have a, a council will be held, public information prior to the public hearing, residents can ask questions in an informal setting. Did that happen?
Not yet.
When?
As soon as we find out what the bids are, and then we have the exact figures, then we will have an informal, public session for the people to come in and see. It won't be a redesign thing or anything like that, but there will be a...
Yeah, I heard that you're also taking bids now, the motion passed, blah da blah da, how the money thing is going to be in your hands again. If for some reason this goes sour on you, I'd like you to reconsider that vote. When Walmart came to town, I think you were part of that council, they had to pay for the bulk of it, and I mean, not just a little bit, the bulk of it. It was their business, they benefited from it, they pay for it. You've got two businesses up there that started this whole thing, they're going to benefit from it, pay for it. City's going to benefit, of course, you guys got your own bill to pay. As far as we're concerned up there, we're not convinced anything happened in the residential area, nothing. Our sewers haven't been touched in years, nobody says it, so they're old, big deal. They're going to last hundred years, you're going to throw away forty years of service for no reason. As far as water pressure, this is the fourth house I own in this town, I've got more water pressure up there than any other ones, and I put new service in on top of them. It's fine. And as far as a storm sewer comes out, you've got people, it's supposed to be on the Fourth Street, it's supposed to help them people from flooding that low long area, the flooded area down there, they're not even being assessed. It's their benefit. Why am I paying for that? It's unnecessary, hundred percent unnecessary. If you've ever been up there, it's a chrome dome thing, all the water runs to the lake anyway. You're going to save maybe ten percent of the water that goes down to Fourth Street, past Fourth Street, not really concerned. It's not my job, I shouldn't pay for it.
Sorry Dave, to interrupt, they're all great points, but if we need to, I'll talk to you, you know, one on one, if you want me to, and we'll...
When?
We can do it after the meeting, if you want. It'll be totally up to you, but you know, we only allow three minutes for each person, so...
Yeah, thank you for consideration.
Definitely give me a call if you can't do it tonight, or I can give you a call. Okay? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Our public open forum is now closed, we will now move on to our public hearings. We have two public hearings, we will recess the normal council meeting, and we will open the public hearings. We have a public hearing before us this evening regarding the creation of a TIF District 1-12 and the vacation of a utility easement. It is our intention that everyone has the opportunity to be heard, if you wish to speak, please sign in on the signup sheet at the back of the room. The procedure is as follows. Presentation by staff followed by questions of staff, public input, raise your hand. When recognized by the mayor, approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. State your comments and position, no one will be allowed to speak a second time until everyone has had a chance to be heard. We will then first hear questions for clarification, then secondly, public in favor of the proposal, and third, public speaking against the proposal. After everyone who wishes to speak has had the opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed. After closure of the public hearing, the council will deliberate and take action as appropriate. Members of the audience do not participate in the council's discussion unless a majority of the council concedes to hear additional information or questions. The hearing is now in session. Vicki?
Okay, the city council, as you said, will conduct this public hearing, and it is regarding the modification of development district number one and the creation of tax increment financing district 1-12, which we're calling the Felling District for the purpose of this meeting. Of the purpose of the creation is to allow the utilization of TIF funds generated by the creation of new tax base in the new district for development costs. So what will happen in this district is that they have a base tax, and then they will construct the new building, and the taxes generated, or the increment on that new building with some limitations, will be captured by the city, and then will enter into an agreement, a business subsidy agreement with Felling, to return those funds to you to reimburse them for development costs, and that's a very simple explanation of how this is going to work. Tammy Umdall is here from Northland Security, she's been the city consul, the consultant on this project, to go through all the legalese that needs to be done to create the district. I did give you each a copy of the TIF plan in its entirety, there's excerpts of it in the packet, that's in the public packet, and anybody from the public can request a full copy of it if they wish to review it. We will have a future approval in front of us, the business subsidy agreement itself, that will outline all the details, the minutia of it, how the money will get refunded. If you have any questions about the process or the planned development, Tammy is here to answer those questions, the Fellings are here, if you have any questions of them, of exactly what the project will be, but what we're doing tonight is creating the district, we're creating the framework, but we're also talking a little bit about the business subsidy and about how that money would be returned to them. There is a component of, the basis for this is not only the creation of tax base, but the creation of jobs. So this district is an economic development district, and it is, in the city's perspective, the purpose of this is to create jobs which happen right now, and then at the end of the district, that additional tax base will also come to the city, the county, the school, and the other taxing districts that will benefit from it. I don't know if I need to go into any more detail on that, I think Tammy will talk a little bit about how the whole process works, and what happens next, and what your approvals will be, and then I don't know if Brenda wants to speak a little bit about, about the project itself, because I don't think we've talked a whole lot in a public forum about what this plan is going to look like. So Tammy, do you want to talk a little bit?
Mayor, council members, Tammy Umdall with Northland Security, serving as financial advisor to the city on the establishment of this district. I would note at the beginning that the hearing notice was for the establishment of the district, but there was also notice related to the business subsidy, so the hearing was properly noticed, and then at a future date, the city council will consider the agreement with the property owner with respect to the assistance, I just want to note that for the record. So Vicki did a nice job summarizing, so I'm going to be very brief. A tax increment financing district and economic development district, which is the type that is being proposed this evening, should you act to establish this district tonight, it allows the city to capture the increase in local property taxes, city, county, school, not state property taxes, for a period of up to nine years. So it is a very effective economic tool for the city, and the city has used this tool with respect to tax increment districts in the past. The estimates for tax increment, to note that, the approximate total tax increment that would be generated over those nine years, all forms, is about five hundred and seventeen thousand, that is a projection, the actual amount will depend on the final valuation after the improvements. The improvements are estimated to be a twenty thousand square foot commercial office building to support manufacturing purposes. With an economic development district, it must be for manufacturing warehouse or industrial, this fits that criteria and given the size. The estimated assistance to the company or the property owner, the maximum amount is approximately three hundred and sixty-one thousand of project costs that could be reimbursed. The city council is not considering that, as both Vicki and I said earlier this evening, but the amount may not exceed that level if you act to adopt the TIF plan that is before you this evening, so I would just note that. And the city has the ability to reimburse those costs with interest, those specific terms would be spelled out in the development agreement that would be before you at a subsequent date. And those are the key points that I wanted to cover this evening. There are two resolutions that you will consider after the public hearing on your regular agenda. One of the resolutions is to act to establish the TIF district. The second one is to approve an inter-fund loan resolution. There are certain costs that the city incurred in advance of the TIF district with respect to the establishment, you are able to approve an inter-fund loan, and then when increment is generated, and that earliest date that that would occur is in 2020, assuming construction commences this year, and as you retain that ten percent of that increment, you would reimburse yourself, so I would just note when you take that up in your agenda, that is the purpose of that resolution. I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Questions, clarification? The city's had numerous TIF districts over the years, and I, we've pretty much decertified most of them now, but we're starting on another one, but for a good reason. Is there, no one has any questions or anything?
No.
Okay, this is, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for clarification, or, go ahead?
Good evening, Brenda Jensen with Felling Trailers, 1525 Main Street South is our address there, president and CEO of Felling Trailers, and just want to reiterate the need for, for this expansion, and publicly, our plan is to build a new office complex, so we've really outgrown our current facility space, we've tried to expand as best we could inside, and we're just really on top of each other in our building space, and so this TIF district would really allow us to put up a commercial office building for our headquarters and make that In-Soc Center continue to be, and we would build it for growth purposes, so for everyone that we currently have to be housed there with offices, and then also we'd have some empty cubes and offices, so that we could continue to grow there, and then also continue to grow with our manufacturing processes, and again, hiring more positions, and hopefully bringing in more jobs to the city, that is the plan. So I just really want to thank you for your consideration, and if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here else that would like to speak in favor, against, or need clarification on this? Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on any three of those? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council as far as clarification for or against? Okay, we'll then move on to the second part, where public hearing will take action on this later on. Vacation of utility easement?
Okay, this public hearing is regarding the vacation of some utility easements. Application has been received from Paul Winters on behalf of Bruce Wellie, and also by Cory Nathy for the vacation of utility easements on property lines common to their properties, which is lots four, five, and six of Block Four, East River Heights. So this is on East River Boulevard out on the east side of town. I did include a copy of the certificate survey showing the easements to be vacated, and so you will see that the purpose of the proposal is to allow for the subdivision of Lot Five, with half deeded for combination with Lot Four, and the other half with combination with Lot Six. So what this does is it would eliminate that utility easement that would go down, actually would be the middle of their property then, after the lot splits have occurred. The easements along the front and the back property lines will remain. I don't know if you would want some additional information on those properties, we do have a lot split application that's going to follow this. What this public hearing does is basically state that we find that we no longer need those utility easements, because those lots are going to be combined together, and that we see it in the best interest of the city to vacate them. So that is really that the action that you are looking to take tonight when we get to the action portion. I don't see that the, that they are in, present at the meeting actually, to provide their public comment, but I did tell them I would bring it here.
Cory's here.
Oh, there he is, right there. Looked right past you.
Okay, any questions on this? This easement was just there in case we needed it, or is there actuals?
This is a newer plat, and in the newer plats, we have a five-foot utility easement down each property line, on each side, and that would allow utility companies to get in there with phone, cable, if we need to get in with power, whatever, we have, already have an easement in place to serve those properties. Once the properties are split and combined with each other, there's no longer a need to get in there with those utilities, so we have, in the past, vacated them in this situation.
I'm assuming there's no utilities there now?
No.
Okay, any other questions, council?
No.
Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak in favor or need clarification or against vacation of the utility easement? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council for clarification, or for or against? Call a third time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council for clarification, for or against vacation of the utility easement? Seeing no one, our public hearing is now closed, we will now reconvene our regular council meeting. Reports and presentations, EDA report?
The EDA met today in regular session at noon, they had a couple items on their agenda, the first one relates to tonight's meeting, they did vote to recommend that the city council approve the creation of TIF District 1-12, so that was the recommendation that came from the EDA. They also discussed potential terms for the business subsidy agreement, you know, Tammy outlined kind of what the development cost, but there's interest and things that factor in, so we'll be working with the, with the Felling Trailers on, on that business subsidy agreement, and the EDA will look at that, and then most likely, I would imagine, recommend that back to the city council when the time comes. So those two items, plus we had another business that came to the table today requesting some type of assistance, whether it be a tax increment or abatement or something, and they're a little bit of bridging the gap to be able to enable them to obtain the funding to come to Soc Center, so that's something that the EDA is looking at as well, which, if all goes well, we'll have a future action on that as well, so. Those are the three items the EDA had, and so nothing further from them.
Questions, comments? Okay, operations committee report?
The operations committee met on Tuesday, March 27th, they had several items on their discussion, some of them are on your agenda tonight. They did review the 2018 ambulance purchase that we had talked about earlier in the year, and that will come before the city council at the April 18th meeting, so not tonight, as well as the purchase of a life pack for the third ambulance, the third rig. We have two of the newer ones and one of the older ones, the older one is no longer being, the computer software is no longer being, I don't know what the word is, serviced or...
Supported.
Supported, yeah, that's, no longer being supported, so they want to get one of the newer ones, that is again on the, on the April 18th agenda. They also reviewed the concrete floor quotes for the cold storage building, they reviewed those and recommend that approval. The TC-45 tractor replacement, they reviewed those, that proposal, and are recommending quotes, that's on your agenda as well, and same with the 2018 general fund maintenance projects, and then they also recommend moving forward with paving the campground loop and the extension road. That last one is not an agenda item, but the three prior, the concrete floor, the TC-45, and the 2018 general fund maintenance projects are all later on your agenda for approval.
Questions, comments? Okay, we'll move on to our action items. 7A, approve resolution 2018-20 approving creation of TIF District 1-12.
As you said, this is the actual resolution, the official action that will create the new TIF District 1-12 and modify development district one, which is actually the entire city limits, to establish this tax increment 1-12. Approval of this resolution that creates all the framework that the new business subsidy agreement will work within. We will have that separate business subsidy agreement in front of you at a future date once we get the actual agreement put in place on how those funds will transfer. And so what we're looking for tonight is to approve this resolution 2018-20 approving modification of development district one, approving the modification, and the modification of development district program therefore, establishing tax increment financing district 1-12, and approving the tax increment financing plan. It's got some there-fours and there-ends in it, the legalese, but...
Okay. Questions, comments? This is just 7, resolution 2018-20, right?
Correct.
Okay, the 21's on a separate page?
Right.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2018-20 approving modification of development district number one, approving the modification of development program therefore, establishing tax increment financing district number 1-12 therein, and approving the tax increment financing plan therefore?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Keith?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other comments, questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Resolution 2018-21 authorizing inter-fund loan.
And this is also what Tammy had referred to earlier, that administrative costs have been and will be incurred for the creation of the new district, this will result in a deficit of the new TIF fund that will be created. The attached resolution, which is 2018-21, approves that the EDA operating fund will advance the funds to the new TIF fund to cover these costs, which will then, are then repaid to the EDA operating fund through the tax increment collected. As you know, that we retain ten percent of the tax increment for administrative costs, and that will pay, not only pay this back, but also we have annual reporting and different things that we have to do that these administrative fees cover. So we're looking to approve resolution 2018-21 authorizing the inter-fund loan for advance of certain costs in connection with tax increment financing district 1-12.
Questions, concerns? Just to reiterate, this is something the EDA met on today, and they approved doing to let this happen, so. Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2018-21 authorizing inter-fund loan for advance of certain costs in connection with tax increment financing district number one through twelve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Diane, second. Heidi?
Yes, sorry. Dragged me through.
I would if she wouldn't. Yeah. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. 7C, approve resolution 2018-22 approving vacation of utility easement.
So this action and the next action kind of go together, the first one is to vacate the utility easement that allows for the lot split that's to follow. So this is subsequent to the public hearing that would vacate the utility easement along the property lines common to lots four and five, and five and six in Block Four of East River Heights. If approved, the vacation will be recorded upon the property, and the easements will become a permanent part of the record. So what we're looking tonight is to approve resolution 2018-22 vacating the utility easements on lots four, five, and six, Block Four, East River Heights, and the more detailed legal description defining this specific easement is included in the resolution.
Questions, concerns? We had the public hearing, everything was explained. Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2018-22 vacating utility easements on lots four, five, and six, Block Four, East River Heights?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other last minute concerns, comments? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. 7D, approve resolution 2018-23 authorizing lot split.
Okay, this request is, is related to the previous vacation of utility easement, the application has been received from Paul Winters on behalf of Bruce Wellie for the minor subdivision of Lot Five, Block Four, East River Heights. The property is a vacant lot located at 424 East River Boulevard. Each half of the subdivided lot will then be attached to the neighboring lot, as shown on the attached certificate survey, it will create, it'll take three lots and make them into two. And we did provide the certificate of survey, the property pins have been set, the property is owned R1, it meets all zoning requirements, the intent of the split is to allow the construction of a new home. I do have a certificate of survey in there showing what it will look like when it's done. The survey's upside down in the packet, but it's still there. So we're looking to approve resolution 2018-23 approving the minor subdivision.
Questions, comments?
I just have one question, these, so we're taking three lots, making it into two for the construction of a new home.
Right.
So...
The one half of the lot, okay, so a lot and a half for a new home, and the other half of the lot will go to the existing home that's already there on the, on the neighboring lot.
Okay, I was just trying to picture how that's working out, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2018-23 approving the minor subdivision?
So moved.
Motion by Keith, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. 7E, approve appointment of Soc Center Public Utilities Commission member.
We have one, one position to be appointed for a three-year term for the Soc Center Public Utility, the term of Mike Bick had expired on December 31st, 2017, we do have a nomination for that, Jeff Bromenschenko has requested to be appointed to that board, so we're looking to appoint Jeff Bromenschenko to the Public Utilities Commission for a three-year term effective April 4th, 2018, and expiring December 31st, 2020.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to appoint Jeff Bromenschenko to the Public Utilities Commission for a three-year term affecting, effective April 4th, and expiring December 31st, 2020?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Keith. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against, and he will be notified to know that he's got a meeting already on Monday, right?
I better call him right.
Yeah. Approve easement agreement with Center Graphics.
This easement is the agreed-upon terms with Center Graphics for the location of stormwater ponds on the Center Graphics property, which is the golf course. Two weeks ago at the council meeting, the council in general approved the terms of the agreement, but wanted to see the written agreement prior to approval. And so just going to summarize that for you again, Center Graphics authorizes easement for the two pond locations for the city, they shall, the Center Graphics will construct the plans according to the minimum size requirements that are provided by the city engineer. The city has the rights to construct the ponds if they're not completed according to the timeline that they've been presented with. Center Graphics will maintain the ponds, we have the right to maintain them if they don't, and then also they agree to their assessment and a deferred assessment, and then they waiver their right of appeal. The impact overall is the project, is the overall cost of the project to the city has been reduced as a result of this, the stormwater outflow to the lake has been reduced, the overall reduction in phosphorus and sediment deposits also to Soc Lake, which is defined as a TMDL lake according to the state, so they look very favorably whenever we're able to reduce phosphorus. which is defined as a TMDL lake according to the state. So they look very favorably whenever we're able to reduce phosphorus. And then we qualify for some additional green funding. We're calling it green funding, but we have requested funding from the watershed. And it's based on how much phosphorus reduction that we have. And they will be meeting on that, I think on April seventeenth. So we'll see how that goes. And I did include the entire easement, this easement storm pond and drainage easement in your packet for your review, if you have any specific questions on there. The one thing I do would like to reserve is that I think the shape of one of the easements might get narrower and longer as we work through this easement agreement and look into design. So I'd like the ability to swap out one of the easement sketches once we know for sure what that is. Other than that, we're looking to authorize execution of this easement agreement.
Questions, concerns? I think we spent a lot of time and effort on this and one of the things is it's going to reduce the cost of the project up there by them working with us on this quite a bit, so. Do I have a motion to authorize the execution of easement agreement?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other last minute comments, concerns? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven G, approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-four accepting quote for concrete work.
And this was the item that was on the council agenda at the last meeting and we discussed it and then sent it back to operations committee for further review of the specifications for what was proposed to happen. So that was on March twenty-first that the council referred that to the operations committee. And this was for the cold storage garage concrete at the street department. So they did review the specifications. I, they had greater detail, I think, than we had at the council meeting. So it lays out seventy-two by eighty-four slab with concrete formed floor drains, a twelve by ninety concrete apron and it's forty-five hundred PSI concrete, six inches thick with half inch rebar, two inch, two feet on center. The ground is going to be laser graded, so this will be done with like a laser screed in order to make sure that the slope and everything is accurate. It will be sprayed with cure and seal to correct, to correct, or for correct curing process and then there'll be control cuts cut in the following day, which is pretty normal when you pour that big of a pour. Then we did have the two quotes from ANH Concrete and Schmees Concrete. The operations committee recommends that the quote from ANH Concrete be accepted. I believe Matt Zinnio did reach out to try to get some additional, some additional quotes or some ideas from some other concrete people, but we weren't successful in getting those. So what the operations committee is recommending that we approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-four accepting the quote for concrete work to ANH Concrete. And I believe Adam, the contractor, is here if you have any questions about the specific concrete and how he intends to make that happen.
Questions, concerns? I know I'm the one that threw a lot of the specs and the questions and everything out mainly because ever since this was brought up, I've never been totally sold that they, that cold storage building needs concrete in it. But it keeps coming back to us, so.
I, I agree with you, you know, it's.
I've, you know, I've, I've been there a few times and I picked up, it, it's also a storage for their cold patch. And just for patching some holes around the hospital and, and it, it is kind of, it gets pretty dirty down there with the, whenever they start something up there, dust just rolls through there. And so I'm, I guess that's kind of why I'm in favor of it, so.
And, and I'm willing to take the recommendation of the committee.
It's a lot of money, it's a lot of concrete, but I think it'll pay off and.
You know, we, it's, one of the things I always went by was the fact that, you know, we've got a lot of things to fix in this town and to spend twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars on concrete that's in a cold storage building.
Yeah.
You know, for the benefit of the city, I just, I wasn't quite sure I liked that idea.
You're looking at it like that, the worst running car is a mechanic's car. You need to spend money on your own. I understand, I appreciate.
Mayor, part of, part, little bit of this came from, you know, when we sold the transit rod, we lost three storage stalls. Where we could store our equipment and everything. And so the thought was, okay, so some of those funds, part of those funds from that sale kind of restore part of that storage area that we had up there, which was a cleaner, nicer storage area by contracting this building. And a little bit of a trade-off, I think, is really how we were viewing that, so.
And I also know the discussion when that cold storage building was built, at the time it was, said, no, we'll leave it dirt floor to save the money. And, but yet it was always a side note out to the side, yeah, don't worry, they'll be wanting concrete pretty soon. And it didn't take too long before it came back to find it, so it's, it always seems to work that way. Do we have a motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-four accepting a quote for concrete work?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Keith, do I have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll make the second.
Second by Diane. Any other comments, questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Approve parade route for Cinco de Mayo Festival.
Okay, the city area, there is a Cinco de Mayo Festival that is going to be held on May fifth and it's going to be held at the fairgrounds. But they also, it includes a component of a parade. And so they have a parade, a proposed parade route that they are presenting to the city council tonight for approval. And this comes from the fairgrounds, the state roadside exit out of the fairgrounds to go up state road up to Ash and then go up Ash to Sixth, over to Birch and then back down around to Ash and then back into the fairgrounds. So what is being requested is to approve the parade route and road closures for the Cinco de Mayo Parade on May fifth, two thousand eighteen.
Questions, comments? From what I understand, we've reviewed this with the police chief and.
We did review it with the police chief and he didn't see any issues with it. Just the whole idea of having the festival in town, we might have an extra officer on simply because there'll be that many more people. We will put barricades out with the public works department. A lot of times in that situation, once on a Saturday, we'll deliver them on Friday during the regular workday and get them out there, so.
Okay. Any other comments, concerns?
I just wanted to comment that, you know, this might come as a surprise to some people. I think the word is out there that, that this is happening. But this actually was only notified about three weeks ago to the chamber and CBB. So we're working with this nonprofit organization as best we can to make this a successful event and bring quite a few people to Sock Center, support local business.
Yes, a lot of horses too here.
A lot of horses.
Yes, it's a benefit for the fairgrounds and, and for the city.
I, I would probably recommend a condition of this, and you mentioned that with a lot of horses. I don't know if all ninety horses are going to be in the parade or not, but if they are, we might want to have like the follow-up parade going down the street to clean it up. So we might want to make that, or at least recommend to the chamber that they make sure that that happens.
Right.
This is a pretty common, they've done this several times, so I think they're.
Right, they have, they have a pretty good routine.
Yeah.
The, the, the nonprofit that does this.
Yeah, this is the first time in Sock Center, but they've done it in other towns.
Yes.
Yes, that's, so it's not their first time ever doing it, so they're very, got a handle on what's going on.
That's good.
Do I have a motion to approve the parade route and road closures for Cinco de Mayo Parade on May fifth, two thousand eighteen?
So moved.
Motion by Keith, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Any other comments, concerns? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-five authorizing sale of vehicle.
The police department had offered for sale a forfeited vehicle, which was that two thousand one BMW sedan through the state of Minnesota online bidding process. And we have a sale to Jason Auto Sales for two thousand seventy-five dollars. We're looking to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-five authorizing the sale of that forfeited vehicle.
Comments, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-five authorizing sale of forfeited vehicle?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven J, approve lease agreement with Sock Center Baseball for JC Park.
The park board met with representatives for the Socks, from the Sock Center Youth Baseball Association regarding their utilization of the JC Park Shelter and concession stands. The association, they've been using the concession area a lot more. They're requesting that the city allow them exclusive use of the concession area so they can keep their product and a cooler in there secured. The board felt that as long as they provide outlets along the side of the concession stand for use by others and that the lease covers the cost of the increased electric usage as a result of having the cooler plugged in, that they would recommend approval of this lease agreement at its estimated two hundred and fifty dollars for the season. And so that would then cover the extra electric to have the coolers plugged in. If you recall, a few years ago, the baseball association actually paid the cost of building that concession area and a storage area. We didn't have one prior to that. Some people, when they rent the park, you know, they want to be able to have access to plugins and everything. So they were going to add plugins along the outside of this wall, which will be under the shelter roof, but under the wall, so that, just like in the other parks, they can pull up a table or whatever and plug in their crock pots and still allow usage. What this also does is it requires the association to let us know by April first what weekends they'll be using it so that we can still rent the park out to others on the other weekends. So it kind of gives them priority use of the field and the shelter because they have to schedule their baseball tournaments ahead of time. So we're looking to approve the lease agreement with the baseball association for the use of JC Park.
Comments, concerns? I think they've done a very good job with maintaining it and working with the city on that field. It always looks nice, so. Do I have a motion to approve the lease agreement with the baseball association for use of JC Park?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven K, approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-six authorizing solicitation of quotes for tractor.
As part of our ongoing CIP program, our new haul on TC forty-five tractor is up for replacement. Actually, it's been up for replacement several years and we've kept delaying it, but now we're having some more expensive repairs that are required of it. And so in, in addition to the repairs, it's undersized, which is causing us to have the malfunctions. And so what we're looking for is to, to replace that with a little bit different tractor. We purchased that tractor in two thousand two, so we've had it for sixteen years. The operations committee reviewed proposed specifications for replacement of the tractor. They recommend that we continue usually utilizing like a compact utility size because some of the areas that we get into. But yet we need to increase the PTO horsepower, because it is because of that lower PTO horsepower that we're causing, causing some of the repairs that need to be done, because we use it to pull the land pride. And so they're recommending the compact utility tractor with a cab with a minimum horsepower of fifty PTO and then also that third rear CV, SCV for attaching hydraulics, et cetera. So the staff would reach out to vendors locally and through the state bidding process, we're not asking to buy anything tonight. We're just approving that we go out and solicit, solicit quotes for those specifications and then bring that back to the city council. And that is resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-six.
Comments, questions?
I think just the big part of this is because the, the other one is what, thirty-eight horsepower, Matt? Thirty-eight, and they, they have to get the RPMs up so far to engage it. And they, you've had the crankcase split twice on that? So that was kind of the driving reason for this.
And we have plenty of acres to mow when that land pride comes in.
Pretty handy.
Very handy on some of these larger lots, so. Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-six authorizing solicitation of quotes for compact utility tractor?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Keith, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven L, approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-seven authorizing solicitation of bids for two thousand eighteen capital improvement projects.
Also, as part of our annual budget, we allocate funds to the street department, related expenses, things like mill and overlay, seal coating, crack filling, parking lot maintenance, that type of projects. In two thousand seven, we completed the state road Ninth Street project, it was over by the school. And we also crack filled streets from prior year's projects, so kind of rotate them through. The operations committee reviewed various projects on the city's five-year capital improvement plan and they recommend two projects for this year. One would be seal coating, like a granite chip with a fog coat. And we could get on with the county bid, the contractor that bid the county will honor the county bid for us as well. Or we can bid it independently. The, the properties that we're looking for seal coating, we were looking at parking lots, but then we looked at them again and I think the parking lots are probably okay, but we're looking at two thousand twelve and thirteen, the project which is the Getty in the Fourth Street. You can imagine that project that we did. The two thousand nine main, emineral project was North Lakeshore Drive up by the lake. The two thousand ten and eleven project, which was First Street South, Pine and Birch behind the PUC. And the two thousand thirteen project, which was High Street, Prospect and Center Street. So these are all little projects here and there throughout the city that we've milled and overlaid and worked on and now we want to put that seal code on them and to preserve, to preserve them. And the estimated cost, if you're looking at between projects one and two, we're looking like seventy thousand, seventy-thirty type split. We have a hundred and ten thousand in the budget for these projects. The second project that they're recommending is the yard area at the street department, that kind of piggyback off of the concrete to correct the drainage in that area. You know where that little brick building is, that would go. We would get the slope right and everything and get that parking and drainage area taken care of and, and tie into the new shop apron, or the cold storage building apron and kind of fix that whole area. And then we're kind of set down there to have that area working properly. And then we had a couple other areas that they did consider for mill and overlay. One was Fourth Street North from the highway kind of out toward, or from the DMV office going east up until the, to the two thousand four project where that ended, where that began. Because that's a detour for this year's project, we decided we'd let that one lay, as well as Lake Street and Elm down below the gas mart. And of course, that's probably going to see increased traffic because of the big project this year, so we thought we would lay that one aside. And the other one we looked at was Second Street from Highway, Seventh Street South from Highway seventy-one going east. Because of the infrastructure under there and if that ties into a big Second Street project, we didn't want to, you know, put new tar on that and then tear it up right away. So they decided to take those three projects and, and put them aside and go with the seal coating and the yard area this year. They also talked about potentially in the future, working on some microseal type projects for perhaps Hickman Drive and the Park Road area. That comes up many times with the ride from, from the cracks in the road and everything. And so we may try a section of microseal there this year to see if that works before we invest a ton of money in that road. But that was another project that they talked about, but the size of that project is way bigger than our annual budget would cover, so. Hence, we're back down to the same two projects that we are, that we were discussing. So what we're looking tonight is to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-seven authorizing the solicitation of quotes for two thousand eighteen capital improvement street projects.
Questions, comments?
This more or less wipes out our seal coating needs.
We will know that after we open the quotes, or our, or our seal coating needs.
Yeah, if we're able to.
What it does and then, then we'll kind of group them together, because then the next time we do it, we'll have like State Road, Oak Street, Center Street up by Fleet Supply, kind of will take those streets then that got paved kind of in a group area and we'll do them. And then we won't have one for a few years and then we'll have this project that we're doing next year, so.
Basically, that's, we're just preserving the ones that are still in good enough shape before we end up doing reconstructs.
Exactly.
Because a lot of our roads in town now are, to that point, they're past the point of mill and overlay and we're, we didn't do anything for so many years that now is, we're up against a wall, so. Do I have a motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-seven authorization, solicitation of quotes for two thousand eighteen capital improvement street projects?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Keith.
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Approve renewal of lease agreement with Charter Communications.
The city has a lease agreement with Charter Communications. They use a little plot of land on First Street North. When you're heading out to the compost site, there's that little shed on the north side of the road, kind of sitting on a mound. That's actually Charter Communications Operation Building and they lease that little square of land from the city. So they presented a lease for renewal by the, for the. So they presented a lease for renewal by, for the council's consideration, it's the same lease that we've had, we just upped the price a little bit each year, it has a ratcheting formula that just goes on to it each year. And so we're looking to approve the amended lease agreement with Charter Communications. Um, the lease is from six ninety-two eleven, the first year, up to seven seventy-eight ninety-seven in the fifth year, you kind of give an idea of, um, how much that square of land we leased to them is worth. So we're just looking to approve this Second Amendment to the lease agreement with Charter Communications.
Comments, questions? Everyone knows where this is? Okay. This, that's been there for years, if I remember right.
It has been.
Yeah.
Ever since Charter kind of came to town.
We always renew, so. Do I have a motion to approve amended lease agreement with Charter Communications?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven N, approved resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-eight, supporting local decision-making authority.
Uh, this, uh, resolution was recommended by the League of Minnesota Cities. Um, in two thousand seventeen and eighteen, the state legislature has introduced multiple bills that kind of limit local government decision-making authority, and, uh, the league is requesting that the cities pass this resolution, that the council, they support retaining local decision-making authority, and we oppose a resolution that removes that ability. So a listing of the bills that would have limiting effect on local control, I did attach them, I don't intend on reading through them all, but you can see, it, it has a, a wide variety of, um, situations, and a lot of them have to do with, um, taking away your decision-making ability by having all kinds of different notice requirements, or if you do this, you're penalized and you'll lose OGA, or, there's a lot of different, uh, things in there, and, uh, anybody that wants to go on the website, and on our website in the packet, is certainly free to, to go in and, and look on them, and you can click on the bill, and you can read it in its entirety, but what the league is asking for us is, is the cities to kind of unite and say, hey, come on, we want to retain our own decision-making, we don't need to have the state passing so many rules so that limits our ability to do business in our own community, because it's not a one-size-fits-all area, so. It's really kind of the long and short of what they're requesting that we do. I did include the resolution for you, um, to review two thousand eighteen, or, dash twenty-eight, supporting local decision-making authority.
Questions, comments?
Does this resolution allow us to bypass any decisions made at the house level, though?
No, all it's doing is kind of sending a message to our legislatures to quit doing this.
Yeah.
So.
Basically, that's one of the things, being part of the League of Minnesota Cities, they watch out for the cities. Uh, right now, just to let the people know in the audience, there's probably six pages of bills going through, uh, and that's, six pages in my packet that have got at least six bills on each page that the House and the Senate are acting on to take the decision-making from this, away from local government. And if we do make a decision, they want to play even a bigger role as big brother and penalize us, or say, no, you can't make that decision anymore, we know what's better for your city than we, you do, and it's one of the things that's been brought to light for us to at least say, no, we're going to stand together and combat this, and I think that's only in the city's best interest to do that. Any other comments, questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-eight, supporting the local decision-making authority?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi, Chair, second it. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven O, approved resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-nine, approving plans and specs and authorizing bids.
Uh, this is for the airport project. Uh, at the airport board meeting on March fourteenth, the board reviewed the plans for the entrance road paving project. The plans have been finalized or presented for review and approval, if approved, the plans will go out for bid. The estimated total cost of the project is a hundred and eighty thousand, with a local share of five percent, or nine thousand dollars. And you do see in there, but really what it is, is it's from County one eighty-six, paving the gravel up to the existing parking lot by the, um, the AD building and, and by the hangars, and so that'll kind of complete that airport project up there. So it's resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-nine, approving the plans and specs for the airport entrance road paving project and authorizing bids.
Comments, questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-nine, approving plans and specs for airport entrance road paving project and authorizing bids?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Keith. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. We have no unfinished business, now brings us to new business, sales tax referendum?
Um, in two thousand sixteen, uh, the city council placed on the ballot at the general election, a question to the public that if approved, will authorize the city to implement a local option sales tax, and that would be a half a percent on sales of taxable goods within the city, and I think you're all familiar with that. Um, the funds would be used to support infrastructure needs, and at the time, we were talking about the city's costs for trunk highway seventy-one, and how we were going to cover those extra costs. Um, the question on the ballot actually failed by a hundred and fifty votes, so it wasn't a real big margin, and so we're recommending that we consider the placement on the question on the general election ballot in two thousand eighteen in November. So if the council feels this is in the best interest of the city, the staff will proceed, will bring back the formal resolution, authorizing us to, uh, to put that ballot, or that question on the ballot, and then kind of outlining what your duties and responsibilities would be as council members to promote that, if you feel that that's in the best interest of us to do. So just kind of general consent to move forward with that, I didn't want to go too far without knowing how you feel, if you think we should put that back on the ballot again.
Comments?
I, I think we should, is there, uh, is there a range that we know of that it's going to cost Sock Center to do our part of rebuilding?
Uh, we had some preliminary estimates before, but I think they've changed, so I'd, I'd hate to throw out a number if I'm not real confident in it.
Okay.
Um, I do know that it's in the millions, so.
Millions, right, yep.
It's one of those things that we discussed before, we all know that regardless of this happens or not, in two thousand twenty-four, we're slated to have a total reconstruct of Highway seventy-one from one end of town to the other, and by doing this sales ref, sales tax referendum, it was going to, uh, bring in enough money we possibly pay for most of the bond payment, the lease, so we wouldn't have to do the assessments to the excess that we normally would and/or, um-
General levy.
And general levy, because if it doesn't pass, and we need to levy the bond payment for our share of that project, the state's going to come in and do it whether we're going to have the money or not.
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to have to either get proactive and come up with it. Um, this is one way that everyone that comes into town, lives in other towns, uh, townships, everything, when they come in and they buy anything in Sock Center, they're going to be paying that extra sales tax. And where it's not something new, if you go to Alexandria, you go to St. Cloud, you go in any other town, New London, places like that, if you look closely at your sales slip and anything you buy, you're already paying it to support their roads and infrastructure. And so I definitely think we need to keep looking at this for the future of Sock Center.
Agreed.
More, more or less, it's, it's, we charge a half a percent sales tax to people that are doing business in this town, outsiders that come here to do business, we charge them a half a percent sales tax. If that's voted down, then it goes against your property taxes.
Be property taxes.
Right, right. So it's in our best interest to put this back on, uh-
Right.
Yeah.
And we could go into a lot more detail, but we don't have enough time to discuss that, so. Okay, is that, uh, general consent to move forward with that?
Yes.
Put that on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And now brings us to our, our consent agenda, we have a schedule of claims, unpaid claims of forty-six thousand sixty-three dollars and forty cents, paid claims of ten dollars, for a total of forty-six thousand seventy-three dollars and forty cents. We have resolution two thousand eighteen dash thirty, accepting contributions of two hundred and twelve dollars from the men's card playing group to be allocated to the senior center, a hundred and fifty dollars from the American Legion Post sixty-seven to be allocated to the police department, and twenty dollars from Jerome and Janice Rapp to be allocated to the senior center. I want to thank those three groups or people for their donation to the city. We have, uh, Sock Center, American Legion Post sixty-seven has submitted an application and permit for a one-day temporary on-sale liquor license for Cinco de Mayo event at Stearns County Fairgrounds on May fifth, two thousand eighteen, the fee and the certificate of insurance are being provided. And we have Jose A. Vargas Garabé, DBA Al Fogan, is requesting a temporary off-premise liquor permit to utilize their on-sale liquor license at Cinco de Mayo at the Stearns County Fairgrounds on May fifth, two thousand eighteen, also. Is there any questions about the consent calendar as presented? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion approved.
I'll second.
Motion by Heidi, second by Diane. Any last-minute comments or concerns? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Now brings us to our informational items.
We have a couple things in your informational items, we have the Tree City, uh, USA and the Arbor Day proclamation, uh, we have some, and that is the end of April, April twenty-sixth, I think it is, which is Arbor Day. Uh, we have the arena events coming up, which is April seventh and eighth is the gun show, April twenty-fourth is the circus, April twenty-sixth is ladies' night out. We have local board of review and equalization on Monday, April sixteenth at one PM, I do need a quorum of the council present for that. Uh, Spring Cleanup and Recycling Day is May twenty-fifth, from eight to twelve at the arena parking lot, and a few other things. Another thing, the bid opening is tomorrow for our two thousand eighteen project, so it's here at eleven o'clock if anybody wants to attend, and, and usually we'll have, uh, quite a few of the contractors do show up, and we read all the bids, we open them, read them out loud for everybody to hear, so if anybody wants to come, that's at eleven. Um, did you have anything to add about the project, Chuck? I didn't, I didn't give him a chance to even give an update. Maybe, maybe he wants to give a little bit of an update on that project, other than that, that's what I have.
Um, I, I have a question on this, uh, the Spring Cleanup Recycling Day, is that for like computers, or is this the metal?
This is the metal recycling.
Okay.
Refrigerators, but you can bring computers and TVs and things too.
Oh, okay, all right.
They have a fee, but, you know, and the advertisement will go out, so you'll be able to see that.
I think printers are free, if you want to get rid of one.
They change it every year, so look at the ad when it comes out.
Yeah, okay.
If you wait, if they're not looking, then-
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, for the two thousand eighteen project, the CIP, uh, as Mickey said, we're looking, uh, accept bids tomorrow, uh, we've been working with, uh, a few permits for that project, working on one with the MPCA on a store, or sanitary sewer extension, uh, one with the Minnesota Department of Health for water man permit, and we're also working with MnDOT on a permit for that, uh, intersection. For the Getty Street project, we're also working with MnDOT on a permit there. Last week, we talked about if there was any easements that were needed, uh, no, uh, none at that, none at this time, and, uh, as far as I know, so, um, that's all I got, uh, for that. Uh, for Getty Street, we're looking at accepting bids April nineteenth, I believe, a couple weeks after tomorrow, so.
Okay, sounds good.
That's all I got.
Thank you.